I'd be curious.
I could try to put something together on that.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to know what they're saying, both commercially, industrially, and residentially.
Absolutely, I can probably work on a number for that. That would work perfectly.
Okay. Any last thoughts?
I can put this together. This was helpful to me and hopefully the rest of the staff as well.
Awesome. Okay, with that then, I want to make sure I give you guys a few minutes. Could I please have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Och Schmidt, second by Mr. Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned and we will be back. I don't have an invocation this evening, so we should be back at seven o'clock. At least I don't believe I have one. I do have a pastor sitting in the room. You're not invocating, are you? Okay, just making sure. Alright, thanks everyone. Is invocating even a word? Did I make that up?
That's one I haven't heard, but you can make it up, it's fine.
I am in an active argument with my son about the word "brang." It is a real word. He's not wrong. We had an election argument about it. That's what it said. Oh, invocating? Oh, "brang" is also a word, but not commonly used. "Brang?" No, it was like "brang" or "brought," was the argument we were having. Like, "Oh, I brought that." And he says, "I brang it." I'm like, it's like nails on a chalkboard to me. Recording stopped. Alright.
It was a bad one, I think. It was a bad one, it was not bad. I just knew that. Oh, that's a bad one. I have a thought, it just went right up my ass. A five-story, that's beautiful. You should see that. All old doors, old cars, right at my house. I think, oh yeah. It was, I brought some, I brought some ghosts, but it didn't help though, it was bad. So I wish the business, I wish there was a guy on Lake Hurst, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Residential stuff, fine tuning, foot and corners and all that fancy stuff. Then I looked at Reddington, that was off the hook. So, I mean, I did my whole thing, I got it in my whole heart. My doors were all fixed and all set for the city use, the city use, all fixed and all. I had, I had, I had, I had, I had eight hundred for that, I had a little garage, I had a certain, I had a certain, all the windows, everything, all the base, all the paint, so. But I, I've got, I've got, I've got a board shop, I've got water box, I've got a baby car. I've got all the boards. I have all the, I've got, I've got a name that I've got. I've got, 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 I know, it's coming around. Yeah. My hands are okay though. I'm feeling pretty good, I gotta get my cordial out, I've got three of them sitting around ready to go, but I gotta get them. Now, my, my trumpet player has got cancer.
Once you give up, that's, you're done.
That's when you really have one foot in the grave.
You betcha. You can't quit.
Yep. I was going down Kent Street 'cause I wanted to check it out because I know you had made the.
Isn't that terrible, down by the railroad tracks?
Terrible condition and everything like that, so what? And I was reminded of several times I came visiting to a town where one of the projects, sometimes I would come and it was in the evening, I don't think it was night, but in the daylight, you have such a guy who's there, I know he wants to put a ton of that work in for you.
I did all my inside myself. I hung all my drywall, only thing I did was have it sprayed and finished by somebody else. The drywall hang and everything else, I did the whole interior myself. I did all the woodwork in there, everything. Trimmed everything, hung the doors, did everything.
Well, it sure looks nice.
Thanks Fred.
You'll enjoy it a lot more.
I did.
We've got a nice, nice Kent Street.
And I love my two trees ahead of the house. Those two trees, I love them.
Alright everybody, it is 7:01. Alright. It is 7:01 and I'm gonna call to order our Tuesday, September 3rd Common Council Meeting. Megan, will you please take the role? Davis?
Here.
Lampy?
Here.
Board?
Here.
Barts?
Here.
Blankey?
Smith?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Wetzel?
Here.
Mildenhauer?
Here.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from November, excuse me, August 20th. Any comments or questions on those meeting minutes? Alright. Next is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Stacy, a studio.
Yes.
Come to the microphone and just state your name and address, please.
Stacy, a studio, East Main Street, Watertown.
Can I stop you? Is the microphone on Stacy?
It is now.
Thank you.
I'm here, it was brought to my attention, I have concerns about some city policies. There was a new officer sworn in this week and come to my attention that he was terminated in Michigan and has an open federal case and that he may have, or he does, have a family member on this force and was sworn in this week and that is a concern for me. Even if it might be legal, it's unethical. And I had fought for a year to have some integrity and decency brought back into this town and we were getting it and now I feel absolutely, completely disheartened. At least until the case is finished, I just, it's a real fishy scenario. I would like to know what is city policy? I believe that there are certain professions, like a police officer, or a teacher, or a babysitter, or a public servant, that when these things happen, until it's concluded and you are found not guilty, that this shouldn't happen and the way it all kind of happened with it, from his termination to him working here within a few weeks and that a family member is on the force, it's just, you guys have been quiet for a year, but I pay attention to everything. And I really hope that this can be addressed and discussed and investigated and that an appropriate conclusion can come out of this. Because as a, I've waited longer for background checks to work in a factory. So, it's very disheartening that this all came to light and I just respectfully ask that you guys maybe take a look at it, because I am aware. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone that would like to comment remotely? Alright, we do have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Let's move to reports. You all have the Finance Committee Minutes from August 12th, Town Square Programming Commission from August 21st, and the RDA from August 21st. Any comments or questions on any of those? Alright, let's go to Communications and Recommendations. The next item in your packet is some information from Brian. We have provided this information in the past, I think, to the Plan Commissioners, but Brian, I'm gonna come to you in just a sec. Brian is just gonna step you through what's in this packet, we're not gonna talk about it all, and maybe just touch on how to read the chart at the end, and then I would just ask you all, especially in light of the conversation we just had, just to hold on to this document so that you can access in the future. So Brian, would you just step us through what's in this packet?
Sure. So the first part is, I believe, some information you've seen before, it's just kind of a description of what future land use is and what zoning is and how they work together and how they're different. Second part is the, are the future land use descriptions from the 2019 comp plan. So when you see those different colored areas on the map, this is what land uses there mean. And then the third section is a table that shows you the different zoning districts and what's allowed in them. It's a kind of a cross-matrix kind of table and if you, there's some instructions there at the beginning to kind of help you through that, to understand how to use it correctly. So, if there's any questions, otherwise that's pretty much all of it.
We have had conversations lately about, is that allowable by right, or is that allowable by conditional use permit? This chart is a good indication, yeah. So hopefully this is helpful to you all. We're trying to hear all the things you're saying and make sure we're getting information back out to you. So if you have any questions on this, I'm happy to take them now, otherwise Brian is obviously going to be a great resource. Just bookmark this one or print it out, I think it's probably a good one to hold on to. Yes, sir?
I just also wanted to point out, rather than trying to find the September 3rd packet, on the website, it's under the Development Plans and Reports Comprehensive Plan. It's got its own page out there. So, pretty neat.
Anybody else on this one? Thanks Brian. Okay, this doesn't happen very often, but we have a closed session during our council meeting. So in just a moment, I'm gonna take a motion to go to close and then I will ask you all to leave the room. I don't think it'll be very long, probably less than ten minutes would be my hunch. And then for those of you attending remotely, this camera will get turned off and the sound will be quiet, but then we'll be right back for our meeting. It may be even less than ten minutes. I feel like Finance got through it in more like five minutes, so, won't be too long, but in just a second, I'll just ask y'all to step out. So with that, could I please have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Part 1, Part G. This is to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who's rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This pertains to Herring versus Royal Mutual Insurance regarding a settlement update. Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Board. And before I go take the role, Chief Rainin, I will invite you to a breakout room, so you can hold tight right there. Megan, will you please take the role?
Davis? Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
The city is receiving an update on the settlement and litigation regarding interhaing. They have continued to refuse to negotiate in regards to the city's subrogation claim. The city filed a subrogation claim for $31,715. This is in part for a paid differential pay to Inter-Herring. As a firefighter, there's a part of the contract that we have the city pay above and beyond over top to the standard rate. That amount is $7,951.39. The remaining portion of the city's lien was $23,755.35. That was in regards to sick leave. In my opinion, that we would not be successful if we litigate the matter to show that his injuries were fully compensated for by the payout that he would be settling his per single claim. Therefore, we would likely only receive $7,951.39 if litigated. However, the cost of regulating that would require that he was found healthy going over his injuries except for the tendive and whether or not he was per se injured. So that was a big part, we need to get that covered in the balance. Therefore.[1127.82]
All right. We are back in open session. I need someone to tell that to Lisa, please. Thank you, Megan. All right, the next item on our agenda then is the payroll summary from August 7th to August 20th. Comments or questions on that one? All right, then let's move to ordinances. The first is ordinance 24-20. This is an ordinance for the attachment of real estate by boundary adjustment from the town of Emmett to the city of Watertown. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on its first reading. Mr. Smith.
Move for the adoption of proposed ordinance 24-20.
Motion.
On its first reading.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Brian is remote and Stephen is versed on this one. And so is Megan. Any questions on this one, you guys? Megan.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis. Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts. Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. Now we're going to be doing that second reading. This is ordinance 24-20 again. Again, an ordinance for the attachment of real estate by boundary adjustment for the town of Emmett to the city of Watertown. From, this is here from me and the Plan Commission for the second reading. Mr. Smith? Where are we at?
Should we suspend the rules initially? I would make a motion then that we suspend the rules authorizing a second reading of the ordinance on the same evening.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Schmidt. Voice or roll? You didn't brief me on this one ahead of time. You didn't. Well, I take that back. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone didn't? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, with that, yes, sir.
I'd make a motion for approving proposed ordinance 24-20 on its second reading.
Thank you. Again, Smith, seconded by Schmidt.
I do have one comment.
Sure.
We've had conversations about this in the past. I really would like to see us, see if there's some way that we can support the citizens in these areas with the cost of their water and sewer. Not in any way suggesting we pay the full freight for them. But we've done some other things for some people that are major developers, and it would seem to me that we should at least consider doing something for them. I don't have a suggestion for tonight, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. Yes.
Didn't we talk about that when we had this initial conversation with the contract and town of Emmett, when this whole process came to head a couple months ago?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes.
I'll just basically read a little bit from the memo that we received here. Basically, in part, this change was for the benefit of voters in that area to file the necessary paperwork with the state and whatnot to ensure that they can vote without confusion the upcoming elections.
Anyone else on this one? Megan.
Smith. Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel. Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis. Lampy. Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 24-21. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 52, Article 1, District in Words in the City Code. This is here from me on its first reading. Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Questions or comments? Megan.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis. Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts. Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. Now we're going to be doing that second reading. This is ordinance 24-20 again. Again, an ordinance for the attachment of real estate by boundary adjustment for the town of Emmett to the city of Watertown. From, this is here from me and the Plan Commission on its first reading. Mr. Smith? Where are we at?
Should we suspend the rules initially? I would make a motion then that we suspend the rules authorizing a second reading of the ordinance on the same evening.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Schmidt. Voice or roll? You didn't brief me on this one ahead of time. You didn't. Well, I take that back. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone didn't? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, with that, yes, sir.
I'd make a motion for approving proposed ordinance 24-20 on its second reading.
Thank you. Again, Smith, seconded by Schmidt.
I do have one comment.
Sure.
We've had conversations about this in the past. I really would like to see us, see if there's some way that we can support the citizens in these areas with the cost of their water and sewer. Not in any way suggesting we pay the full freight for them. But we've done some other things for some people that are major developers, and it would seem to me that we should at least consider doing something for them. I don't have a suggestion for tonight, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. Yes.
Didn't we talk about that when we had this initial conversation with the contract and town of Emmett, when this whole process came to head a couple months ago?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes.
I'll just basically read a little bit from the memo that we received here. Basically, in part, this change was for the benefit of voters in that area to file the necessary paperwork with the state and whatnot to ensure that they can vote without confusion the upcoming elections.
Anyone else on this one? Megan.
Smith. Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel. Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis. Lampy. Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 24-21. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 52, Article 1, District in Words in the City Code. This is here from me on its first reading. Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Questions or comments? Megan.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis. Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts. Motion passed eight to zero.
I catch on quick. Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we suspend the regular rules to be able to entertain a consideration for 24-21 on its second reading.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Schmidt. Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Awesome. And then is there, yes?
Make a motion to bring proposed ordinance 24-21 to the floor on its second reading.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Comments or questions? Megan.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel. Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy.
Aye.
Board. Barts. Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. Next is ordinance 24-22. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 550 of our official zoning map for the city of Watertown. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on its first reading. Mr. Schmidt.
I make the motion.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Comments or questions? Yes.
For the purposes of illustration, this is one of the ones that's come in to us from Plan Commission. So I think as these things start to move through, those who had feedback for additional communication from the Plan Commission on certain items, like as we see these things moving through, take some notes, pass them in, please.
Thank you. Anybody else on this one? Ms. Davis?
Would I be able to ask a question about the plan or is that not appropriate right now?
About the plat, like the layout?
Right.
Yep, the plat, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So I just had a question. I'm curious to know what the order of building the single families will be, like at what spot will they begin? Where do they plan to end?
Brian, do you know the answer to that?
I believe it's going from north to south, so the first phase will start just south of the YMCA and kind of work its way down.
Is that correct, Nate? Okay.
So starting with lot 96 and going 96, 95?
Yeah, 96 will be the multifamily, the large multifamily lot, and then the twin homes start along the west side of the property, and then the single family starts to blow that.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Are these, are these lots being sold?
Okay.
Or is, is the builder just going to build them and then sell them as completed properties?
Do you stay at the, or Tracy, whomever?
One more time, I'm sorry.
Are you, are you just going to go in and build a bunch of homes and then sell them or are you selling a lot to an individual and building a house for them?
No, so we're going to be selling them in blocks to the developers. They're going to start out with a couple of spec homes, but for the most part, they'll build a feeder system where the buyers will come to them first, tell them what style house that they want on that lot, and then they get to choose kind of, you know, adding what they want within that or taking certain things away and telling them what's the actual house size that they want.
I didn't hear your conversation with Mrs. Davis. So where, where will you start construction?
So, so right up at the top, north. Do you see it in?
Take a peek right behind you.
Yeah, right here, perfect. If you can see this, these are the twin homes. So what we're going to do in phase one is the roads will get built all the way down right before the cul-de-sac if weather gets in our way. It'll unlock 14 single-family homes to start with. It'll unlock all 18 of the twin homes. And then it will also, lot 97 will then be opened up as well for the, for the multifamily development. That'll be coming kind of a little bit later, a couple of months here down the line as they work through their.
So, so the purpose of my question then is, you'll build a couple of spec homes, but it does not necessarily hold that you're going to start at one lot and just keep building down. If I come in and buy, I don't know, I come in and buy lot 18 on June 1st, let's see, we're in September, on November 1st from the developer, you'll skip over all those other lots and build mine first?
That'll be up to the developer.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not, not for us. Our, for our purpose at the foundation, as soon as it becomes permit ready, they'll be eligible to sale to that developer. And then for the single-family developers, if it all gets done within weather permits, they're going to, they're going to buy them in blocks of 20, north to south.
But they're not going to build 20 spec homes, I guess is what I'm trying to drive.
No, no, I think, I think Harper said that they would maybe be, I think the max they'd be comfortable doing is seven.
Yeah.
I don't think you're even going to see.
And then the other 15, or the other 13 would be sold as they're purchased.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, they would know what's going in the ground before.
Thanks.
Other questions for Nate while he's at the podium? And I actually remembered to share the screen this time. Normally I forget that, so. Okay, other questions in general on this one, on this final plat? Megan.
Schmidt. Wetzel. Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy. Board.
Aye.
Barts. Smith.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. Next is ordinance 24-23. This is an ordinance for the attachment of real estate by boundary adjustment from the town of Watertown to the city of Watertown. This is for N 9009 County Road A. This is here from me and the Plan Commission. Mr. Barts.
Motion to approve ordinance 24-23.
Motion by Barts, seconded by Board. Comments, questions? Megan.
Barts. Smith. Schmidt. Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy. Board.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. Thank you. Let's move to resolutions. Our first is Exhibit 9645. This is a resolution for the addition of Ward 23 into the city of Watertown, again from me. Mr. Smith.
I'd move for adoption of Exhibit 9645.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Mildenhauer. Questions or comments? Megan.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt. Wetzel. Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy. Board.
Aye.
Barts. Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9646. This is a resolution to discontinue the public way on Jones Street near and about its intersection with North First Street. This is here from me and the Planning Commission.
Exhibit 9646.
Motion by Mr. Wetzel, seconded by Mr. Board. I'm going to ask Megan to provide a little insight. Excuse me, I meant to say Mr. Barts. Thank you for looking at me weird, Mark. I was really, I was really set on making sure Megan could provide a little insight on this one. On the, bring to the floor or on the? Just on, so this is one that we're going to need a motion to table, correct?
Yeah, so we were hoping to have the numbers filled in for the resolution tonight, and with communication errors with Jefferson County, the document did not get recorded, so I do not have that number. So we're wanting to push it back to the next meeting when we can provide.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I would move in light of that to table this resolution.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Schmidt.
And do you need amendment to a specific time? So it's not just an open-ended?
We'll have it at the next meeting.
Okay.
We have no reason to believe we won't. All right. All those in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Awesome. Let's go to our next. It's Exhibit 9647. This is a resolution for Rock River Ridge, their final plat. This is here from me and the Planning Commission. Mr. Lampy.
Prove 9647.
Motion by Mr. Lampy, second this time, indeed by Mr. Board. Comments or questions? Megan.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board. Barts.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt. Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhauer. Davis. Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. It's a big milestone, you guys. Congratulations. Next is Exhibit 9648. This is, and thank you, I should say, not just congrats, but thank you as well. This is a resolution to add a tax event to our lease. This is here from Mr. Schmidt and the Transit Commission. Motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Barts. Any questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, let's go next to Exhibit 9649. This is a resolution to enter into a state municipal financial agreement for the reconstruction of Laberry Street between Bouton and Anne Streets in 2028. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
A motion for 9649.
Motion by Mr. Wetzel, seconded by Ms. Davis. Questions, comments from anyone? Megan.
Wetzel. Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy. Board. Barts.
Aye.
Smith. Schmidt. Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. Next is Exhibit 9650. This is a resolution to approve Grave USA for General Municipal Engineering Services for Engineering. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. Motion by Mr. Mildenhauer, seconded by Ms. Davis. Comments or questions? Yes, sir.
The question here is that it only lasts until the position is filled?
You got it.
Okay.
Anybody else? Megan.
Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy.
Aye.
Board. Barts. Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel. Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9651. This is a resolution for new singular wireless, doing business as AT&amp;T on the tower, the O'Connell Street Tower. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Board, seconded by Mr. Barts. Comments or questions? Yes.
This is similar to the other carrier that we just did on?
Yes.
I believe so, yes, yeah.
Yeah, different tower.
Just making sure I'm tracking.
Yeah, we did the one on the City Hall Tower. This is on O'Connell Street.
Anybody else on this one?
And, and if I make one correction, I don't think the Doing Business is AT&amp;T.
I balked at that myself.
Yeah, that's, yeah. People know them as AT&amp;T, but it's a separate company.
So is, it's singular?
But the resolution, the resolution's correct, PCS, the resolution's correct and the contract language is correct.
Okay. And AT&amp;T is just in parentheses?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on this one? All right, Megan.
Board. Barts.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Schmidt. Wetzel. Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy. Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9652. This is a resolution to adopt a right-of-way dedication for 1911 Gateway Drive with the PIN numbers listed in the agenda. This is here from me and the Plan Commission.
I'd move for Exhibit 9652.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Comments or questions on this one? Megan.
Smith. Schmidt. Wetzel. Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy. Board. Barts.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Our last exhibit is Exhibit 9653. This is a resolution to amend our payroll for dispatch and dispatch supervisor on the 2024 payroll resolution. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. Motion by Mr. Mildenhauer, seconded by Mr. Lampy. Any questions or comments? Megan.
Mildenhauer. Davis. Lampy. Board. Barts.
Aye.
Smith. Schmidt. Wetzel. Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. We are at the point where we have another opportunity for comments from citizens present or anyone remote. And seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Mildenhauer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.